Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the September 24th special meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. And at this point, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the role.
Yes, Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord is excused. Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protem and Secretary Bavacqua.
He's here.
Sorry, here.
Commissioner Clark Martin is excused. Commissioner Gosson.
Here.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner King is excused. Commissioner Stone.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lord just got in.
Okay.
Here.
Welcome, Mr. Lord. Welcome.
Hello, everyone.
At this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, but I'm going to just recite it, and you can just follow along. I understand that gets kind of mixed up, and we talk over each other and all, so we'll begin. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In the future, I'll probably ask, we'll pass that little, we'll pass that little task around and let others take the lead on that as well. At this point, I want to mention that this is a virtual meeting, and this is in particular for anyone who's tuned in on community television. As a result of COVID and an executive order from Governor Whitmer, public meetings such as this one are now held virtually using electronics. And for everyone who's watching the screen, you should, from their home, you should see a telephone number displayed at the bottom of the screen. We've had really good luck with this, so if you have comments or input on any of the upcoming agenda items, we encourage you to call. We won't be able to see you visually, but the audio has been terrific, and some of the people who have called have had some key things that the commissioners really appreciated hearing. The final thing on this virtual meeting is that the motions and votes taken by the commissioners do count. That is not the case in a typical time, but as a result of COVID and the executive order, any action taken by the planning commission does take effect. At this point, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. I don't know if any of the commissioners have any comments, but Sienna asks, is there anyone who's written in or waiting online to speak with us?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Number four is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8, 2020. I'd ask the commissioners if you've had the opportunity to review the minutes, any changes, additions, deletions, et cetera, and if anyone is interested in making a motion.
Moved.
Moved by the mayor. We have support.
Support.
So it's been moved and supported to accept the meeting minutes from the last meeting, September 8.
I'm sorry, who supported? I'm sorry, I couldn't tell.
Go on.
Thank you.
Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Bixson?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much. The next item, number five, request from St. John's Lutheran Church and School to extend the timeframe for allowing the outdoor portable classrooms located at 1011 West University Drive. Nick, I understand you're going to be handling this.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Pastor Mark's in his car. It looks like he got relegated out of the house or out of the church, so good to see him there. About a month ago, I met with Pastor Mark and the staff to go over where we were at with the project. It was right about when school was about to open, and he was letting us know. We wanted to talk about traffic flows and all the things and where we stood. During that, obviously, COVID made it tougher contractors to finish work. At the same time, we talked about, and remember that, the planning commission had given a, basically, a year based on the request of St. John's Lutheran Church and School to keep the portable classrooms there, but their full intention was to get the addition on, remodel the inside of the building, and then abandon the portable classrooms. So as we were out there, we realized, we looked back at the minutes of the planning commission, realized that was an action taken by this board, and for that to continue, I told Pastor Mark that he would want to come and formally ask the board. He submitted the letter on 8/31 to come and explain where they're at in the process and how things were working and what they would like to do, and asked for the board to extend that timeframe with the, to keep the portable classrooms. And for the record, staff is in support of that. We've had zero complaints about how it's going on. They've been very, very communicative to the residents. The one gentleman that was struggling in the back with the play lot sold his house. The new people are great. They met with the church, and they've got a good relationship. In fact, we're going to put a berm around there and a fence and landscaping. So it's been a good relationship. They've lived up to their part of the bargain. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Pastor Mark.
Please do. Welcome, Pastor Mark. How are you?
Doing well. Thank you. Thanks for the time tonight. Yep, and thank you, Nick.
Before you begin, I just, it would be helpful, just because I know churches and schools have had a great challenge with this. I think we'd all find it interesting. There are a lot of parents and grandparents around here. How are you guys doing? How are you getting by?
Thanks for asking. Yeah, you know, it's, it has been challenging, right? And for our whole community, it's a different kind of time. We, during the lockdown, had an opportunity to figure out, how do we do this online? And we went with all of our services and schooling online during that time, along with many. We have a preschool through eighth grade, and that was, my wife is a teacher, and I will tell you this, during that time, I've, a lot of people worked a lot harder during that time, when you heard people saying, hey, we got all this extra time. That was certainly not true of many people, and certainly not teachers. They put in a lot of effort during those days. But I will say this, you know, we've come out of it and weathered it, and we've begun in recent weeks doing onsite, as well as continuing to be, do off-site, online worship opportunities for people. This past fall, we've launched and begun, at the, what was it, right the week before, Labor Day, we made the decision after much planning and option A, option B of what school would look like this year. We felt we had a green light to go ahead with face-to-face learning with lots of provisions and safety in place. And what we experienced once enrollment opened up in that way was we are at a standing line right now and a waiting list on enrollment right now. We are at capacity for our facility with the new normal of a reduced capacity. So a good opportunity there, a lot of new families. They're not part of our community through our school ministry, and church ministry continues to go very, very well right now, in spite of it all. We've had opportunities to serve our community like ever before during this time, and been calling on a lot of local folks, saying, hey, who are people in need? How can we reach out? And it's been neat to see our community rise up to those challenges, but also to do it with love and compassion in these days. So hopefully, that's a report. I mean, we're praising God.
Thank you. That's very informative for all of us. We really appreciate that. How's the school coming along? And then how much longer do you need this classroom for?
Yeah, so currently, there are two, two second-grade classes. It's a double classroom unit. And this year, we've, again, we're at capacity with that, so it's very, very needed. In that, we were, planning this summer was going to be Phase Two in our project. Briefly, was not an expansion of, I should say it this way, we were hoping at one point in time in the past to include a gymnasium as part of that expansion. This was going to include an office wing as well as a community gathering space expansion, and then a renovation of offices that would make room for additional early childhood rooms that would, in the future, make that classroom no longer needed. That expansion has not happened. That was going to happen this summer, and as a result of delays, we missed that window. We also took a pause on that portion of the project to just see where things are at. We saw the writing on the wall as a ministry and leadership team to say, this is not a time to be bold and go into deep debt at an uncertain time, and I'm sure you're hearing that from a lot of different corners of our community right now. We wanted to be wise in that way, and as a result, we've taken a pause. What we are doing, though, is finishing up Phase One, which was our site landscaping, and what has additional work needing to do is some curbing that has to still go in, some follow-up warranty work on the original curbing, some additional sidewalks are going in. We were hoping to pave yet this year, yet in meeting with our construction management team recently, it seems that is not going to be wise on several levels of, we're missing the window to be able to lay down the final asphalt, as well as the disruption to school with school already being a kind of a chaotic thing, given all that's going around in the world. So our intention is to finish up the final asphalt next spring into summer, as school lets out, as well as the landscaping plan. This fall will be along our property line to the back, to the south, to put that all in place for, that's been long in coming. We want to finish that up, and we're going to do landscaping where we can, though that's also been affected in this and enabled to, the availability of certain species that were okay by the plan. And we are awaiting some of those to be available in the spring, where we're intending to do the full front and finish that all up along University Drive. That would happen again in the springtime, so along with the irrigation and all that goes with that.
How long do you need the classroom for? Like July 1st of '21 type of a thing, or?
Right now, honestly, we are on pause with Phase Two. We would need to be gearing up right now to launch Phase Two with going out to bid at this time of year. Realistically, we do not see that happening next summer. This would be summer of '22, so 2022, which means at a minimum right now, we are requesting, I know we can do this only one year at a time. So we are asking through summer of next year, we would most likely be coming back to you at that time, unless we see a drop in enrollment in the next year, seeking to get.
Give it, give us an optimum date we'd like to see here.
Um, I mean, we can, this isn't like a normal site plan approval. It's a condition. So, I mean, we can go year to year, just a year from today, and like Pastor Mark said, if the enrollment somehow drops, which we don't want to happen to the school, then they might not need them that way, but you're hearing that they're not going to get it constructed a year from now. So I guess our best guess is to go, our best opportunity would be go year by year, and then get an update every year and see where we're at. That would be my suggestion.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the administration or Pastor Mark? Is there a motion?
So I'll make a motion. Now is it, the suggestion is for one year? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. And so that would be until September 24th of 2021, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and who supported?
Commissioner Gosson.
Okay, any other discussion?
No, I just want to say, I think they're doing a great job over there.
I think so. It has to be a tremendous struggle for the schools, as well as any kind of business. It's just unbelievable. I'm glad I'm retired.
Yeah. Well, and we want to.
Go ahead.
Just to tell you, we wish, we really truly wish it wasn't kind of caught in the midst of construction, because that's not where we want it to be. We wish it were finished today. So we thank you for your patience.
Your enrollment is at top capacity. That's great news. Yeah, that's great news. The roll call, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Epstein.
Epstein?
Oh, you've done that before. Yes, sir. I understand.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Good luck. Good luck, Pastor, and.
Appreciate it, Pastor.
Hopefully, things smooth out and you get this project completed by the time this expires next year.
Very good. God bless you. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is number six, consideration of amendments and revisions to the originally approved site plan for facade improvements for the coffeehouse to be located at 226 Walnut. Nick, is this yours again?
It is. I'm glad. It's always nice to bring an amendment, and that's an upgrade to the plan, because not somebody coming in saying, I can't do that. So I met with them a few, about a month ago, and we started talking, and if you've been by the site, they've done painstaking work on restoring the brick and all the work around the property on the building. And with COVID, the landscapers are really far behind right now, and our men reached out to me and said, hey, you know what? We've got time looking at this. And originally, we had one, we had the outdoor dining to the south side. I'm not going to change that, but I had one pergola, but now we're looking at the building now that it's stripped down. We think we can upgrade even more. We can, we'd like to replace your city sidewalk, which has nothing to do with site plan approval, but, so it's all fresh and new. And then we have some other pergolas, not to put more outdoor dining, but to balance the look of this building. And I said, you know, because a pergola was part of the original plan, it's not a structure, but it's really a site plan issue. They had no problem with working with their architect, resubmitted plans in your packet, and I was referring to our man and his team to explain the upgrade they'd like to do. And again, staff thinks this is a wonderful thing, and I hope the planning commission sees their way through that also. I may, Mr. Chairman, to our men.
So you, the staff is supportive of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is the petitioner here, and do you have any comment for us?
Armin, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Thank you again for having us here tonight. We appreciate the patience, and thank you to Nick also for looking into this again. We were just, as like Nick said, as we were looking through this, we said that, you know, in the evening time, we were just wondering how the outdoor lighting would work. And then, meeting with Mark from Antonelli, who is also on this call tonight, he brought up the idea of adding pergolas that would not be for structural support, or obviously, it doesn't change any outdoor patio seating or anything. It just mainly serves as a more balance in our building, and also being able to add lights at the top just for outdoor lighting in the evening hour.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the commissioners, or either Nick or for Armin?
I mean, do you have a picture? Or Mark, can you throw up a picture if we share your screen?
Sure, let me, let me pull.
I think you'd all like to see this.
Yeah, no problem.
Do you have it up, Mark, or do you want me to share the screen?
I've got it right now. I'm going to share my screen.
Awesome, okay.
Can you see that? Okay? Full screen? Yeah. Okay, so here's the existing building. Can you see my mouse cursor? No.
Not moving, anyway.
Okay, but you see one full picture.
Oh, there's a whole bunch of them. There's six there.
Let me try one more time. I'm just going to share my screen here for you.
There you go.
That. So now you can see my cursor?
Yes.
Great, okay. So this is the building here. I use the term pergola very lightly, because pergolas typically provide shade, or they provide something for a vine to grow on sometimes. But in this case, they're really open frames to provide a way to hang lights overhead. And this is different. A lot of restaurants have been doing this frequently with lanterns and lighting, where you see the cables very openly and exposed, and this is a way to provide overhead lighting in such a way that we're, we're just providing a very structural look for this lighting. And so you can see here, a few different shots. These will be set back from the existing sidewalk by about 10 feet. So we'll be well off the city right away. And like, like Nick said, they won't provide more seating, but they will provide designated areas for which seating to be placed under or gatherings to take place well into the night. When we were originally handed this project, there were really just lights along the building, and so we wanted to create a really nice patio atmosphere. And so this patio you're seeing here is what was approved last year, and these pergolas are built right over the top, simply on steel posts that are four by four in dimension, four by four inches, and they're simply holding up six by 10, six by 10-inch cedar beams.
So everything is wood, or are the poles metal?
The posts are steel.
Okay.
To provide a lightweight look, and the beams are, are wood, cedar, to provide a nice structural form and a modern look.
Okay. Questions for the petitioner?
So when will these be constructed?
We are actually ready to break ground tomorrow morning for the patio, and as long as we have approval, we'll start digging post holes for the footings. I believe Sienna has the structural diagrams, if you'd like to see.
Yeah, they had submitted to Randy McClure, Mr. Chairman, our building official, already, so they would be ready to go. Our planning commission saw a fit to approve this.
Okay.
What about the width of either pergola? Does it infringe upon the lot line of the owners on opposite sides of you?
No, they are off of the lot lines.
By how many inches or feet?
They're inset about two to three feet on the south side, and about five to six feet on the north side. On the west side, along Walnut Boulevard, like I said, about 10 feet.
And, Mr. Chairman, we looked at, to make sure that any lighting wouldn't affect any residential area, and that's the DFW Hall to your left of the picture, and our parking lot to the right, so there's no light impact. We thought about that, too.
Just following on Matt's question, I'm assuming a pergola is not a setback issue, a structure that is part of a setback issue?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioners, Christian Hauser?
Yeah, go ahead, Christian.
Just real quick, and I know Commissioner Stone had asked about when you're going to start. What is the anticipated completion date for this project, presuming everything starts to go as planned?
Christian, we're, obviously, we were hoping by now to be open, but.
Right.
As you know, COVID has been rough, and in the test of that, you know, we, everything was pushed back. So we're really hoping by early spring to have this all completed and done. We have ordered the windows and the doors, and the windows took about nine weeks, while the front doors that you see, the three, are taking somewhere between 14 and 16 weeks to come, just those. And, you know, Mark's crew should have the outdoor landscaping done between three and four weeks. And the electrical is pretty much done. The HVAC is done inside. Now is just finishing touches and replacing doors and windows, which is going to be the next big thing, and then being able to go to work in the inside, and then, of course, painting the building on the outside. So we're hoping for early spring. That's the goal.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Nick, Nick, this is more for you. I know we're saying that there's not additional seating, but I think I see tables and chairs within this pergola, and I just want that to be clear on the record.
Right, so bench seating is okay, because they can put that there. It's not, it's not dining, so no more outdoor dining activities like the left side, or seating that just like they have at the brunch street to sit instead of standing on the sidewalk. But all the dining is where that fence is being opened by that gentleman, it looks like. So that's where our dining was. Nothing has changed.
Okay.
Yep.
Armin, I just, I just want to point out, I hope, I think we all hope you're eminently successful.
Thank you.
But just be careful that there's not creep here. In other words, you're so successful that the temptation is to start dining in that area. I'm not saying we would support it or object to it. It's just that, in order to do it, you have to come back again.
Of course. No, we completely understand. We, this is, like Nick said, we did not even discuss the the changing of more patio seating, just because we're very happy with where it's at now, and there is, we don't see a need for any more of that due to the fact that, obviously, the building itself cannot really hold any more, you know, seating, and we feel like it would just be an overcrowded area for anything more.
Okay. So Nick, what do we need? A motion to amend the site plan?
That would be great.
Is there such a motion?
So moved.
And who moved that?
Commissioner Lord.
As support.
Support.
Christian, was that you?
That was me. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Sienna, do you have any questions on this particular item from anyone from the public?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. The roll call, please.
Lord?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thanks.
Absolutely, good luck.
Everyone, really appreciate you much.
Our next item is number seven, but Sienna noted to me that someone was waiting. Sienna, is that person still on hold?
She is.
Why don't we just go out of step, and we'll call this public comment and, and and ask, go ahead and connect that person.
Kat?
Yes, right here. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. And how about all of you? Staying healthy, I hope.
Thanks for going through the hoops to call in. We appreciate.
Oh, my gosh. Well, you know, I, Sienna doesn't know what happened, because it told me I was going to, I'd raised my hand, but obviously, some glitches, but doesn't matter. But what I wanted to speak on was looking back at the last couple of meetings, and I will be quick. I do understand there's a three-minute limit. Hopefully, I will be well under. I kind of felt like I was almost at an arm's-length DDA meeting, because so much of the discussion on special projects seems to revolve around our downtown and not the impact it has in the area something's being built or for the residents surrounding it. And I think in the future, we've really got to look at the effects of our residents and the taxpayers who live by the structures. I'm just going to go back and briefly say that we did a special project, and we listened to the developers, and we have a tendency to believe, and I think we have to stop that as well. One of the developers that came in, and that was the controversial building, of course, at Parkdale and Main Street, own, a developer said they're going to live in a penthouse. They're going to live. A good selling point. That top is taken. That top happens to be for sale for $1,060,000 as of Sunday, and Monday it's listed. He never moved in. We have the special projects right across from City Hall, another special project. One floor is going for $750,000 without finishes. The other floor is going for $900,000 without finishes. Now we have the riverfront development, and they're saying, first of all, the traffic study, I don't think, is correct, and I would argue that point, because one thing they based it on, besides what they were supposedly, how they were, they were tabulating traffic. I travel that route every day, and I will tell you, it's got a lot of traffic, a lot of egresses, and it's dangerous. But I will say one thing. One of their selling points was, there will be not a lot of cars, because everybody will be working from home. A lot of people will work from home. Gosh, help our economy if that happens, because employers are going to be dumping bricks and mortar in parking. When they have to dump bricks and mortar that they owe, they're going to look to cut employees or cut salaries or benefits, and that doesn't help anybody. Next, we have tons and tons of rentals here already. We all know that. They're a dime a dozen. That was not the building, really, that should have been there. And what's happening now is, with the pricing that's going on, that would have been ideal, again. that would have been ideal again for brownstones or some small homes being built, like a cottage enclave to afford the middle class, to afford older residents, to afford the young couples starting out and to afford the singles. By what is going for sale in this city and all around us, you're pushing out a whole segment of the population. Totally. They cannot afford this city. That type of rental does nothing for us because it destabilizes an area and it pushes and makes other people unhappy. We have to look at quality of life and not just for a downtown. Because if we're, if you say this is the way it's going, then we need to tell our downtown, this is the way shopping is going. It's going strictly internet and online. It's not going to the little shops unless you're like a resort area. It's going to just entertainment, bars and restaurants and walkability, parks and sports. That's it. So there is a reality there and I think we have to look at the quality of life and what's happening. We have parking lots around us. Our streets in this whole call quadrant, Taylor, Castell, Second, First Street, they are literally parking lots. That's many cases, you've got one lane traffic because of the big vehicles. And we're talking big vehicles that the owners live in those houses or in those complexes. We're going to be worse now, and I think that needs to be taken very seriously into consideration with these special projects. In my lifetime here, I have never seen so many special projects that have come through our city than I have of late. And that's not good. We need to afford everybody. And when everything is going for close to a million dollars, 600, 700, 800, a million, it's not being pushed by the people that want to own a home and can. They just can't afford it here. So they will go elsewhere. And if Rochester wants the reputation that we want people that make $500,000 a year to come in and only be living here, you are going to push everybody else out. And that's exactly what's happening. People are not happy with this because of the affordability. I think also putting all the money into the, uh, receptor that we did was very good because now the developers can take advantage of it. I doubt if that's going to hold when those other two projects come in. But I think it's something we really need to give some thought to seriously in the future is looking at if the project truly, truly fits. And I will tell you right now, I would not buy in there. And the reason why a phase one goes in and here's my brick wall. Do people really want to live next to somebody else building another tall building, attached to their building for another year or two years? That's detrimental. The traffic and the egress from there is going to be a nightmare because the road cannot handle it. So what do you do? Take out all of your easements, widen everything and have the traffic practically in people's living room windows because that's what'll happen. And I just think that we need to give far, far more thought. We're a tiny place. We're not even three square miles. We need to take into consideration very much the residents and the residential impact because the developers will not live by their own developments. These are cookie cutter. You can see them all over the place by the developers. They won't live by them. No, and one other thing, okay. They're insulated by their wealth and they're insulated physically by where they live. And that's one thing you've got to think about because none of you people would be living by them or impacted. That's it. And I will talk about infills at a later date with you. Okay?
Thanks, Pat. Thanks for calling in.
Thanks.
Uh-huh. Right, right. Sienna, do you have, uh, anyone else on the line?
No, I do not.
Not at this point. Okay. All right, uh, let's go back to our regular agenda. Number seven, continued discussion of infill development. Vidya, your, your folks are going to handle this?
Mr. Chairman, yes. Julie is on the line and Julie is going to, uh, start the discussion. The infill ordinance has been before the planning commission for, for, uh, several meetings now. We have discussed multiple aspects of it. Tonight's meeting, what we hope to accomplish is for Julie to just do a brief refresher on what we have discussed, where we were, where we were going and what our next steps are to get this moving to initial line hopefully. So I will defer to Julie to take over from just.
Julie, welcome back. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You too. Uh, and thanks Vidya for giving me a little introduction. I am going to go briefly through just a few slides, just because it's easier, uh, than looking at a document in front of you. Um, so my slides are acting up today. So like Vidya said, um, we're really here to just go over, uh, two items that we sent to you, kind of recapping the discussions that we've had in the past. So we had that, um, what we called summary of proposed actions. It was a table with each of the issues discussed and what our recommendation is, as well as the proposed text amendments that we put forward for the infill housing. So I wanted to put this up here because I think it's really helpful in framing this kind of sprawling discussion we've had. Um, we talked about a lot of things under this umbrella of infill and we wanted to step back from that and, and really separate things out into things that are actually best regulated in the infill ordinance solely, uh, related to infill projects and things that are currently better suited to be addressed elsewhere in the ordinance.
Uh, could you shrink that slide a little bit? It's, it's kind of, uh, overlapping the sides.
Hmm. Okay. Is that better?
Well, I don't think, no, not yet. The 83%, knock it down to maybe 75 or so.
Okay. I have a really large monitor. That might be some of the issue.
Little more if you can.
Julie, maybe, uh, use the triangle on the right-hand side and, uh, on the right-hand side, go in the center and click that, the triangle. Go in the middle on the right-hand side, right where it says comments. You, you'll collapse that. There you go.
Oh, I got it. Sidebar, is that better? If not, I can maybe try switching to my.
You centered it. I think we're okay.
Okay. Um, not sure what it is centered to you. I apologize. Uh, see that's.
See, okay. I'm not sure if everybody's having an issue or not, but it's, it looks fine to me.
Okay. Let me just flip screens because I have a really large monitor and that's maybe just what's throwing it off. Um, or we can just ditch the slides completely if they're really.
Actually, uh, Julie, it is pretty visible. My suggestion is just scroll to the right and left when you're discussing the various columns. So Chairman McGee can also see the different columns because I think many of us are able to see in case that device is smaller, it might not be.
Okay. Um, on my screen, Vidya, just so you know that there is no right or left to scroll to, which is why I was trying to, to flip it over real quick.
My screen is fine also, just FYI.
Mine too. Yeah. Go ahead and put it back up.
All right. Always some, you know, I've done so many of these Zoom meetings and it's always something new. All right. So info issues really related to just a handful of things. Um, a lot of the other things we discussed, I think, fall into other sections of the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, if not the code of ordinances. Um, and then there's one overlapping issue, uh, which is the garage standards, which I can get into, uh, in a little bit. So we classified things into kind of three bins. Those things that we didn't think really warranted any action, those that we thought, uh, were actionable, either within the infill or outside the infill. And then those we think need further discussion or are potentially future issues. So under those no action items, we had, uh, non-conformities and building design or form standards. Just a clarification on the non-conformities, uh, just to remind everyone, we're not saying that non-conformities are not an issue. Rather, the language in the ordinance that currently, um, governs how we deal with non-conformities and whether they're allowed to exist was considered sufficient and not needed of any changes at this time. For our recommended actions, really just these top two overhangs and projections and egress window wells were related to the infill ordinance and appear in the text amendments that we've given you. And these we think are going to help, uh, clarify the ordinance, align it with how it's being interpreted and administered currently, which will go a long way and remove some contradictory language. Um, and then in terms of the egress window wells, uh, bring the ordinance just completely into compliance with building codes and, and allow for safe implementation of those in the side yard. Um, construction site standards is the other one I'll touch on here because we know that this is something that, you know, people really wanted to see move forward. Um, this is something that really belongs in your general code of ordinances based on our research. And we've sent some model language to the city attorney. Um, he's given kind of a first sign off on that and we're hoping to, uh, have administrative review of that and get something in front of the city council and your manager's report next week. And then finally, a couple of issues for further discussion. We talked a little bit about the garage ordinance. We revisited that and really found that it's not so much the way that the accessory building section of the ordinance is written. It's really the limitation of lot sizes in your R1 and R2, which is where a lot of your infill projects are going that limit that front garage from being viable. So if you really wanted to make that change, we would recommend that be a modification that's only permitted for infill projects in R1 and R2. Um, but it would require on a 50-foot lot, um, increasing that permissible width that a garage can be of the front facade, um, from 40% to over half of the total facade. So I think that's something you might want to consider. And we have not proposed making that change at that time because we, we don't think that that's a good move. We think generally this is working and we can't do much about the lot sizes. I think, uh, what you're seeing in terms of permissible garages are pretty in character with what exists in Rochester.
If I might just interrupt for one minute?
Sure.
Just to provide some clarification for the planning commission, right now our ordinance says on the R1 and R2 law, a garage cannot occupy more than 40% of the front facade, which means after you take out the two side yard setbacks, the maximum width of a garage you can get is 18 feet, which is a single car garage. If you want to change the ordinance to permit a two-car garage with its minimum width, at least 55 to 60% of the front wall of the house will end up being the garage. So if you want to change the ordinance to make it more convenient for people to have two-car garages in the front, is to understand it will go against what you previously had targeted as having the entrance or the main door to the house as the primary feature and not the garage. So if you want to go down that road, it will have other unforeseen consequences. So I'm not saying that that's not the way we should go, but the ordinance was first initiated to create this 40% simply because the planning commission did not want to have houses with garages seen before and the doors seconded. So if you make, have two-car garages, it's not going to be 55 to 60% of the front wall of the house will be just the garage.
Nick, we, uh, talked about this before and I, uh, maybe you can reiterate. Do we get a lot of requests to be able to do this? Nick?
I apologize. I'm talking attorney Krot, which awesome. I'll talk to you about in a minute. I'm sorry. Can you ask the question again?
The question was, uh, these, these, uh, garages in the front of the homes are, do, do we get a lot of requests to be able to do this with infill housing?
We've got three in the last three months, which, and we've only had nine new houses. So a third of them request that.
Okay. Um, Julie was just going over, along with Vidya, the perhaps unintended consequences of doing that. And, uh, I think this, we're gonna, you're gonna have to educate us more on that with diagrams and examples and things like that. But I'm aware that just from listening, that there are a lot of people who would prefer that kind of housing. I think we have a burden to fully examine whether or not we can reinstate that. Right?
I would suggest we move the garage discussion to complete separate discussion on its own. Tagging it on with the infill discussion will just delay the infill ordinance also. So whatever changes we are recommending, clarifications to be made to the infill, I would recommend that we actually move forward with those and the garage is going to be a contentious issue of discussion because it will be likely back and forth. So let, let us keep that for a separate discussion with mine.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Vidya, I think that makes sense. Um, and then the last issue that I think is we're recommending this may be a future issue to address, maybe like the garages now, um, is the issue of impervious surface coverage. So just to frame that, your lot coverage currently is in the schedule of regulations that's based on the underlying district. It doesn't really have anything to do with infill specifically. Um, it would be strange or maybe a little bit uneven if we only said impervious coverage restrictions apply to just infill projects. You could certainly make a justification, but it would have to be a very strong one as to why infill projects should be treated differently than every other property in the district. Um, and it's also related to another, uh, a variety of other sustainability issues that might be better served as kind of an overarching land use policy. Ideally, that would be something that you do some public input on. It's, uh, you have a foundation for it in the master plan and then that carries forward into uh, storm, residential stormwater amendments, potentially building, green building code practices, residential solar, uh, alternatives for impervious, you know, pervious coverage on lots. Um, I just think that it could be potentially contentious, especially as it's going to affect every residential property and is maybe better, uh, thought about in the long term with some of these other issues, uh, that it, that it closely relates to.
Okay.
Yep. And so with that, um, we're happy to answer any questions about the proposed amendments.
Vidya, what would be our next steps here? What, what would be a schedule of how this would proceed?
I believe the next step would be for us to actually put it in a draft ordinance language form and bring it before you with specific standards or language text clarification, like strike through, you text a formal text amendment before you, you would review that at one meeting and then set it for public hearing so that it can move forward.
Vidya, we submitted a strike through of the draft amendment in the format that you gave me for this meeting.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Vidya's been, Vidya's been so busy. She forgot she helped me, uh, edit that.
I apologize. It's just been juggling two things. So.
Are these documents with the attorney then for review at this point?
We have not, we have not sent them to Jeff for review yet. No, we wanted, uh, we had been talking with city staff about bringing this all back for your discussion. Um, I think we could vet that through Jeff, um, and then bring it for public hearing.
Okay. Jeff, I don't know if you're online and if you have any input for us.
I am online and now hopefully on video. Um, so no, I, I think, uh, what Julie said is correct. I think I'm comfortable, um, with setting this matter for a public hearing. Uh, that would be not an opportunity for, um, the planning commission to kick it, uh, take it around some more and, and have, if there's any comments between now and then, we could certainly incorporate them before the public hearing.
I, I would like to suggest that we see the, uh, the draft ordinance one time as a commission before the meeting where the public hearing is scheduled. It's, this is complicated and, and as you mentioned, potentially contentious. And I, I think we need the time to digest it.
I believe it's in your packet, the draft text that Julie said, the actual draft text of the ordinance is in your package tonight.
Yes, it should have been.
Okay.
Well, to the chair, to the chairman's point, there's, you know, we do have a, another meeting coming up and, uh, we, we could always ha- have it come back at the next planning commission meeting. And then at that one, because that'll be the first meeting in October that could be on already. Um, since it's not a public hearing at that point, we could easily submit it. Then planning commission can take a look at that point and say, yes, it's ready to do, uh, set for a public hearing. We're only going to lose, uh, a week if you want to even caught a loss.
And I would like to request if.
Sorry, Vidya.
Uh, I would like to request if the planning commission members have the time to just look through the ordinance. If any questions or concerns pop up, please do not hesitate to email them directly to me or Julie, or you can send it to Sienna and Sienna will immediately forward it to us. So if something just upset at you as, you know, you're concerned about it or you're not following what exactly the ordinance implies, please feel free before the next meeting to let us know, but we will bring it back before you.
Commissioners, how, how do you feel about this?
I think it's a good path forward. I, I, I do see that it was in our packet here. Um, I looked at the agenda and I saw that it was continued discussion. So I figured we would just be talking about it as opposed to taking any action on it. So I sort of took this as kind of a discussion and. So I sort of took this as kind of a discussion and learning session, continued discussion on this. So if we want to actually have a public hearing on it and and get into it a little bit deeper at the next meeting, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is David Gass. And similar to Mr. Lord said, but I don't, so we need to fast track it. If we do the review in more detail at the next meeting, commission and then set the public hearing, the meeting following, if I understood right, we're not doing a public hearing at the next meeting. It would be the following. Is that correct?
That was my suggestion. I agree with you that we should not fast track this until we as a commission are conversant in what we're proposing to do here. I must say that I am not at this point.
I'm in alignment with you, Mr. Chairman.
This is Christian Hauser. As the newest member on the commission, it's the first time I've discussed this with anyone. So I would concur with what the other commissioners said and I would proceed according to what has been talked about here.
Thank you, Christian. Any other comments? Okay, so I don't think we need to take any action tonight other than to thank Julie for coming again. And we'll wait for the staff, the administration to get this together with Vidya and propose it for us at a future meeting. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, number eight is miscellaneous. Do we have any, any miscellaneous? Sienna?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a unique one. So at four o'clock today, I want to say keep this amongst us, but I think that's impossible on this meeting. So I just cleared this with Par. Four o'clock today, General Manager of Par Pharmaceuticals sent me an email confirming what we've been talking about quietly for a couple of weeks. So the federal government has just authorized Par to start manufacturing a COVID vaccination. They have 14 weeks to be operational. What they're missing at the Par facility is a 5,500-square-foot refrigeration area to put this, to store the vaccine. It's under Operation Warp Speed. So here's the unique situation. In 2012, Par came in, got approved basically the same exact refrigeration unit or something else. And it's totally behind the building. You can't see it. They never built that because they ended up doing that. I think I know Mayor Bixson's been in that room. That was a $10 million room. Remember that they did that, the new operational floor, the injectables. They built that instead, not the refrigeration unit. So, so when they called me, they said, hey, can we re-up that site plan? I said, that was eight years ago. It's obviously expired. So, so what I'm going to ask tonight is that for this second meeting in October, we're gonna, in one meeting, schedule, I'll schedule a public hearing, have them submit the plans, get it approved that night. And they might start working on the plans with buildings sooner than that because this is obviously a federal big deal. So it just came, I just literally got this and it's like, sorry, we're not trying to jam you, but we didn't expect this. And it's like, okay. And I said, can I tell the planning commission tonight? And they said, yes, as fast as you.
I speak for the planning commission in saying that we want to do everything we can within the ordinances, of course, to push this along as quickly as possible.
Okay, that's good enough for me. I will pass that on and make it happen.
You know what? Vaccine that, which of the three that are in Phase Three, they're proposing to manufacture.
He did not tell me.
Okay. Very good. That's great news and something we can all be very proud of.
I agree.
Any other miscellaneous?
Is there any further research as far as a performance bond by developers for development forward?
They have not, Attorney Crot can confirm this, but I don't think Mr. Randazzo's team has submitted the proposed development agreement to you yet, Jeff. They're trying to dot all their i's and cross their t's before they come back to city council for the.
That's correct.
They're not on an agenda yet then?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Is that good enough, Matt?
Yes, thank you.
Chairman, I have a miscellaneous comment for me.
David?
Ten years past, we've had, and not every year, but every two, three, four years or something, we have a, kind of fall tour in review of developments that have been completed in the city. And this time being different and with COVID and so forth. Is it possible administration could prepare a digital presentation of completed projects? And maybe it's not this year, maybe it's in the beginning of next year, just so we stay in that rhythm of reviewing our work or thinking that.
That's a great idea.
I think we can do that. I think we can, yeah, we can work with CMN. CM, however they say it, and I'm sure they could help us get footage.
Uh huh. Very good. We can do that.
Thank you.
What do you think, later this year or planned and early?
I would try to get the footage now so you can see things green and some of the things that are done. So I'll put that in fast motion. I think that's a very good idea. Sienna, I can work on it.
David, great suggestion. Any other miscellaneous?
I guess to add to that, I'd be curious to see if we're going to get footage like that. The renderings that we saw initially put up next to the actuals. Just out of curiosity, just to see how it actually, you know.
No, that's a good idea. We could do that.
Very good, very good. Look forward to that. Sienna, any other members of the public waiting to talk to us?
No, there is not.
Okay.
Good.
Sienna, number 10, upcoming agenda item for October 5th.
Yeah, so we have the public hearing for the Pfizer building for them install that water for injection still. And I guess I'd need a little help from Nick. I never received anything from Lake Realty for a facade renovation. Did you hear anything from them otherwise?
I did not. So if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I want to go back to the first one. So thank you for reminding me of this. So yesterday, sorry about this, yesterday Pfizer called, said they too have something going on with the government to a little bit different product and they need to put a vestibule on the back of their building. It's literally 800 square feet. But they have time because we have a public hearing coming up next in October. So I talked to Vidya. She said they submit those drawings that modifies, just shows the vestibule. It's a windlock when they come in the building for sterility. And Vidya said she could add that to her review letter. We could process that because we have not had the public hearing yet. That's that one. Now Blake Realty, yeah, he, a member of Mr. Blake was approved on Main Street to put his second story for his realty. He decided not to do that. Yep, he decided not to do that, but to go with more historic preservation of the one-story building that's there now. So he, it made a couple of windows change. So I told him he still had to come back, but he has not submitted those plans yet. So he would have to shoot for the second meeting in October if he doesn't get things in soon.
And that would be a facade renovation.
Yeah, modify, again, a modification to a facade renovation that was approved.
Okay, very good, very good. With Pfizer, I'm again speaking for the commission, but same standard applies. Any help we can provide to move that along, we're willing to do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Sienna, is that it?
The continued discussion of infill will be on that, that agenda as well. Other than that, that is all I have.
Okay, very good. As usual, we have busy times ahead of us. We always seem to have that. Okay, we've done it in an hour by my clock. And unless there's other business, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for us?
Nope, I just think the, as Commissioner Stone said, that Mandazzo project, you know, we're not going to bring it to the city council till they've met all the conditions and they have.
Very good.
Oh, we do have one, Sienna, Mr. Jim, I'm sorry, because you expected to see 210 diversion. Remember that? We saw a presentation from them. We saw a presentation from them about their 40-unit development on diversion. They submitted their packet to Vidya and to Sienna. And those are really nice guys and their pictures were gorgeous, but the meat in the package was terrible. And we rejected their, they went to Rochester Hills and told them, oh, I think we're all good. And when we got the package, we were very disappointed. Told them until they have virtually nothing that Vidya has to make a comment on, we are not bringing that to this board. They are not ready. So they did submit the packet. We rejected it.
I have some preliminary comments.
I'm sure that you're educating them thoroughly. We appreciate that.
And then US Scooba, that is Chief Financial Credit Union. They are getting prepared either tomorrow or the beginning of next week to submit their plan in a complete package, I believe, across Rochester Hills to review. So that one's coming up.
Okay. Commissioners, any other information, any other business? Okay, with that, thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, all.
See you, everyone.
All right, good night.